Council. That's all right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have roll call, please, Terry?
Councillor Blevins.
Here.
Councillor Dolzal.
Here.
Councillor Hill.
Here.
Councillor McElroy.
Here.
Councillor Metcalf.
Here.
Councillor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwain.
Here. Thank you very much for that. We are at the consent agenda. Oh, actually, first citizen and community group comment. Do I have any online or any? Okay, we are at the consent agenda now. Anybody want to pull anything down out? Or discuss?
I would just like to notate item C, resolution with the stop sign on Northwest Sixth and Broadway.
Okay.
Discuss is fine. I don't think we need to talk about it. I just like the community to know that we're addressing this. The city staff worked very hard and they heard your guys' concerns and they're moving forward with the four way. So that it's not just something passed through that we just vote on really quick. I just wanted to take a second address that the four way at Sixth and Broadway is in works. And I just wanted to say thank you to Melanie and the staff and Dawn for working through that and helping us to find some resolve with that quickly.
Okay, anybody else? Should pull anything down out or over? Nope. Okay. Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
A move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, but first and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, consent agenda passes. Thank you very much for that. Okay, we're at Department and Committee Reports, the City Managers Report. Melanie, that would be you.
Okay. Well, continuing on on that thought of the stop signs in the that we have the resolution and therefore it will, since that passed tonight, then we'll have Public Works order the signs. We probably, I'll talk to Dawn, but probably need to put up the ones with the flashing lights on them to, because it'll be brand new stop sign and they'll have to make sure they have the thermoplastic for crosswalks and things like that. And as soon as they have all the materials, then they can work on getting those installed. But for my report tonight, I wanted to just highlight the, the City Council on Traffic and Public Safety Committee Workshop that was held on October 21st. And in case anybody wasn't watching or didn't, hasn't had a chance to see that, the council and the committee discussed safety concerns with traffic and pedestrians around the community. Appreciation was expressed for the recent improvements made with stop signs and speed humps. And we have had a lot of changes, which Estacada stayed the same basically for a long time. And so having changes come in and seeing how traffic patterns work and where the, you know, where concerns are being seen and how best to address those are kind of, has taken us some time, but I think having that discussion and direction from council and Public Works figuring out and how public safety weighing in, it's all kind of coming together. So just wanted to highlight that there was consensus to prioritize school zones and work out into the neighborhoods. And so that's the plan for staff to address. And the next slide, again, highlighting that's not the correct location. That's brought a new, new stop sign at Broadway and Liberty, but they did at the, at the workshop, there was consensus along with encouragement from the school district to make Broadway Northeast Six a four way stop. So that is passed tonight and we'll be moving forward. Next slide. And we have some follow up items from that workshop. We need to identify traffic calming and safety improvements at the River Mill School and surrounding intersections. And that is one of, one part of the thriving communities program that will begin work this month and traffic and public safety have a couple of representatives on there as well. And then we're also going to be developing a scoring rubric to help prioritize projects and we'll get that on the agenda for discussion on your December 8th meeting. And then I also wanted to go through and just highlight this council has been very supportive over the years at making improvements around in the school, which is kind of like the heart of our community. It's like right at the center is where a lot of the traffic goes through the school campus or right adjacent to it. And so there's been a lot of priorities over the years. In 2012, we did new ADA ramps and crosswalks at that, that one on the left is right by on the corner of the middle school and Sixth and Main. There was no crossing to, in fact, I think right there, there's still no crossing across six that just goes across main, but we did ADA ramp there and also over at Clackamas River mid block. Next slide, in 2016, we did a realignment of the crosswalk that goes from the high school to the middle school, right at the stadium. That bottom photo, I took that off Google Maps, so it's not great, but it, you could kind of see how it was a diagonal crosswalk, which puts students in the crosswalk or people attending games, whatever it might be, puts them in the crosswalk or in the street for a longer amount of time. And it was just kind of an awkward crossing for safety as it was getting more traffic. So we realigned it, straightened it out, so they have a shorter distance to cross, improve the, the crosswalk. You can see them working on the left and finished product on the right. And there's also flashing pedestrian lights that you can push if you're ready to cross the street to catch driver's attention. And then next slide is 2017. This is North Broadway Street going up towards River Mill. So the top right photo is the, how it used to be prior to the project. The street, you can see on the left, I tried to catch that, a picture that I couldn't, I was doing it quickly and I didn't find great photos, but that's off Google Maps and you can see how the whole street is just alligatored out and was, so it was a complete rebuild of that street from Sixth up to the school at Eighth, right there. And so the street was in better condition and then we made the sidewalk a ten, there's no sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. So we made this sidewalk 10 feet wide. So there's more room for pedestrians or little kids riding bikes or whatever it might be. And that was a great project in 2017. That was an SCA grant. Small, a special cities allotment grant from ODOT that helped us with that. And then on the next slide in 2021, we did the hot topic of the realignment of Northeast Main and Sixth intersection. I mean, you can see on the left, that's the old crosswalk. That's a highly traveled crosswalk for students, high school and middle school especially. And that was 80 feet. They were in the street before the realignment. And I know it's, if you're on six, then you're turning right onto Main. You gotta pay attention to what you're doing or you'll hit the curb if you're, if you're a longer vehicle. But you do have to, it's, it is, we had traffic engineering done to make sure that it was possible to make that corner. And then now you can see the, the short distance that there is to cross and especially in the morning when kids or afternoon when there's cars are waiting, it's congested and you would be sitting there waiting to go and kids would be crossing and they just about get across the street and then boom, another pack of them starts coming across. And then you're waiting, look, so this is great. It gets them out of the street faster. It helped with the right turn from Main Street going on to Sixth. Because there was two lanes there with the right turn lane, but you couldn't really do it from the right lane if you had a bus or a truck and trailer, because the, the turn was just too sharp. So you kind of had to move out to the middle. It was just, it was an awkward intersection. It's been taken quite a lot of getting used to. I know some people probably still don't appreciate it. But the point was to make that interstate, intersection function better and safer for the vehicles, but also a lot for the pedestrians. And then I have one last one to show you, and those are bad pictures, but the one on the left is the middle school and there's also flashing pedestrian lights there to come across. Main, it says fifth, but that's actually fifth would be going to the left. So you can come across from the middle school and then there's a crosswalk down. And then the one on the right is over at Clackamas River Elementary, got the four way going all the way around that. And they have on the uppermost side, there's flashing lights for pedestrians. And then at the, we've done ADA improvements all along Main Street and Broadway uptown with a CDBG grant and made that while the street has been repaved also. And then there's also better crossings along there. And so I just, I think it's a great testament to the work Public Works does managing these projects, but also to the priorities that council has, that we've really been working in our school zone and kind of this kind of a huge campus right in the middle of town. And so I just wanted, I know some of us haven't been around as long, or I, when I started thinking about it, I'm like, gosh, I forgot about all those over the past more than a decade. But we keep getting better. We want to do know better things and do better and get better. And so I appreciate the council prioritizing that. And the next thing will be that stop at, the four way stop at Broadway and Sixth. So everybody drive carefully because I know habits die slowly sometimes and we'll try to get that signed really well. But are there any questions about any of that?
No, it's good.
Okay. That's all I have today.
All right. We are at Commissioner and Lea's own report. So any of you have anything on your groups, Jerry?
I was sick all last week. I missed both of my meetings. So yeah, sorry.
All right. No, no.
Matthew? I just want to add that traffic and safety has been doing just an epic job and I'd like to see that we're all on board with all of this. So shout out to traffic and safety.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. We are now going into council business. First on council business, I have sponsorship request from Reagan Christian Memorial Fund.
Oh yes, let me get down to there and I'll just give you a quick highlight. And if anybody has questions, I believe Lisa will be on Zoom. If there's questions, I wasn't sure if there would be, but this is an application for the community scholarship, not scholarship, community grant funding from the Reagan Christine Memorial Fund. And it would bring the total budget that would be remaining would be down to $8,000 from $15,000 if this was approved in full. And if anybody has any questions for Lisa, I know she was going to be online, but I know she gave you a lot of information in the application and then you're probably familiar with that foundation already too.
Okay. Council, you've had a chance to read the request. I remember when this first came on board, she, she did, they did a really great thing there at the school. I'm sure you're probably all aware of what, what happened. And I think you'd probably all be in support of giving this to her. If there are any questions, please raise your hand. None, none. Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the sponsorship request to Reagan Christine Memorial Fund in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the list, I have the invocation discussion. Now, this is a topic, we've been down this before. I'm going to let legal speak on this right off the bat. I mean, she gave you all something to read on that. But I'm going to let her take it away right here and kind of give us a, an outline here.
I will do that. Yes. Thank you, Mayor Drinkwain, City Council, City Councilors. I don't know what your discussions have been on this topic before tonight, but it is on your agenda. And so I thought it might be helpful to provide kind of a brief legal primer or the legal background in this area. So I did email you a memorandum and have printed copies before you in the manila envelope, which you're welcome to leave and I'll collect afterward or you can take with you. And with that, so an invocation practice or is also known as a legislative prayer, and it's something that has been practiced for hundreds of years at the local, the state and the federal legislative level. The purpose for a legislative prayer or invocation is to set the stage and bring everybody together, probably not dissimilar to the reason that you practice a moment of silence before your council meetings, to maybe have the first quiet moment of everyone's day, bring everybody together in the same space, in the same room and recognize really the sanctity of what you're about to do, which is potentially take up really divisive and factitious issues. Being in a community with many different interests and beliefs and in just preparing for that, for that effort. So the, the primary legal challenges that come up with invocations are under the First Amendment to the US Constitution, which provides for the free exercise religion and does also prohibit the government from establishing one religion. So those are the challenges that come up with invocations and legislative prayer. The Supreme Court has a seminal case on this from 2014, which I mentioned in the memo. That one really set the, set the path for legislative prayer and provided for the guidelines for how to do it in a way that passes constitutional muster. So I provided sort of the, the aspects of that policy, which is essentially providing space for any member of any belief to come up and provide the invocation, have it be a neutral process and a written policy and those kind of best practices in that bullet point outline of the memo. On the other hand, in cases where the practice of a legislative prayer invocation has not been upheld, that's more where it, it comes directly from the government and is geared toward or seen as promoting only one belief system or done through a less than neutral process. And I have kind of those guidelines in the second bullet point list. I think with that, that's pretty much all I have to say for the legal aspect. It's, it's I guess depending on your discussion, if you do want to move forward with the policy, I do recommend it be in writing and we can, you know, with your staff, develop one for your next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Counsel, this is your time for this discussion. Are there concerns, feelings you might have on this, things that you want to add? Things that might, you know, be of concern to you? Now is the time. And Jerry?
So being part of the discussion or part of the decision, going from an invocation to the moment of silence, one of the big reasons that we went to the moment of silence is so that everybody could do their thing their way. You know, and it was, it was really dominated by, the invocation was really dominated by a couple of a couple of people or a couple of, yeah, a couple of members of the community. It was a, I mean, it was like two people that ever did our invocation that I can, you know, for the, the time we had it while, you know, while I've been a counselor. So the moment of silence just gives, you know, takes the pressure off of anybody to feel like they have to participate and, you know, gets, gives everybody the chance to do it their way. You know, that's pretty much what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you for that, Jerry. Anybody else want to comment on this? I mean, this has been a big issue.
In reading all the, the material and, and from attorney as well, I thought I saw one in the city or something like that where they limited the number of times that a particular individual could speak. I thought I read somewhere that you could put time limits. I inversely think it'd be really interesting to see who wanted to sign up. I mean, because you're going to put it out there for everyone. I'd love to see who signs up and, and wants to come talk to us. With the, however you can word it, the understanding you're not denigrating anybody or, you know, that sort of thing, but I'm, you know, I think it'd be fine.
Yeah, there's a pretty large list here. And is there a way this could be gotten out to the local churches if, you know, we wanted to open it to every single one that we could notify them and?
We could definitely, I just pulled the list of like the local churches that I knew of. And so that was the ones that were inside city limits. I think probably there's other religious organizations or non-religious organizations that might want to participate. So we probably would, if we do a policy, Laura would help me figure out how to get the word out so that people could know how to sign up and who would be, you know, invited to sign up.
Yeah, I think we do that mayor by, but looking online and any local directories for any established congregations of any faith and then putting out a public notice, inviting participation perhaps once a year, then you sign up.
Okay. And with this prayer be before the council actually goes into effect when, when I put down the, the gavel and we open it up, or is it during the actual session? So when we go first go in, it would be at the first of that. How does it, how do we establish that?
The same timing that you have the right, just in there, just before your business, before your legislative session. So it could be before or after the gavel really.
Okay, I got you.
Mike? I'm in full support of the, the prayer at the beginning. I just, my concerns about it are non-established organizations or churches that are not set up right now. They're going to just try to make a negative situation out of it. And it's going to be somebody wanting to come up and do something that's, as long as we have the language in there that it's positive and uplifting and not disparaging to other non-religious or religious groups as part of the invocation, I think that'll probably check the box for you're going to get somebody from the complete opposite end of that spectrum that's going to try to make a really negative situation out of us having the invocation and they're going to say that they're not fairly represented on it. And they're going to come and they're going to just try to say something that's just to make it where we don't want to do it at all, because everyone has to be included that their, their negativity has to be included in that as well. And as long as that's not what it spirals down into fully supportive, opening up to all the established organizations and either religious and non-religious organizations that are currently established in the city. I just don't want to see someone establish one just for the sake of coming to be a thorn in the side of everyone at a meeting. I could see that that's likely to happen.
They don't have to establish anything. They can just request, you know, request to be part of it.
And as long as they come in, they're positive and I'm, yeah. Yeah, I'm good. And the moment that they're not, we shut it down. I'm, I'm good with that too.
That sounds fair enough. Anybody else wish to comment?
I mean, I think we let people speak their mind. We live in a society where people are ashamed into keeping their opinions to themselves and this room has been open to all sorts of opinions, whether differing or not, we've been pretty supportive and very understanding, I think, to sit and listen and I don't think you can force participation in this. Nobody has to close their eyes or pray, just like they don't have to during the moment of silence. So I think if somebody wants to come up here and express their principles and share in the to what Councilman McElroy said, as far as being a positive, positive impact in the room, then I'm all for it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes.
That's good. Okay, Matthew?
Yeah, I mean, we have 11 plus churches in this town. I think that would actually bring a lot more people in than had been. I think that per capita, that's quite a bit for our size of town. So I think that the inclusivity would actually grow and make people more a part of what's going on. And that's why, that's why I initially brought it, because I feel like there's been a lot of people that have been sitting on the sidelines that didn't actually feel accepted because of what has been going on over the years. So I think that this move would actually make more inclusivity.
Okay. All right. So that said, how would this motion rate?
Some, it's on page 27 or I could say them, oh, no, I didn't actually write it down. I said, based on your discussion. So I think Laura might have that.
I move to direct staff to craft language for a moment of prayer using the practices that are likely to be upheld by an upper court. Right? Using the, the, basically the line, the outline of what you have practiced that are likely to be upheld.
I would say if you're calling it an invocation policy or, or you'll have invocation on your agenda, then I move to direct staff to develop an invocation policy according to the discussion the council had tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, let's do a roll call though on this one, please.
Councillor Blevins.
Yes.
Councillor Dolzal.
Yeah.
Councillor Hill.
Yes.
Councillor McElroy.
Yes.
Councillor Metcalf.
Yes.
Councillor Ten Bush.
No.
Mayor Drinkwain.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving right along. We are at ordinance 2025 dash zero one two and ordinance amending chapter 3.38 transient lodging tax of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Okay. These updates that are included in this ordinance are required by the Oregon Department of Revenue in order for them to administer our transient lodging taxes program, which has already been established. And so staff is recommending that the council adopt this ordinance to align our current, the current ordinance that we have in place for collecting TLT with the requirements of the state and also direct staff to enter into an IGA for the state to administer our TLT. Right now, it's just something we do in-house. This would be, it would make it easier for city staff to just have that collected by the state sent to us. It would also make it easier for those paying the, the transient lodging tax, because they would just get their, they would do their report and make their payment to the state all in one fell swoop. And then it would be distributed out. A lot of cities are already doing this. And the cost is basically $40 a year. It's $10 a quarter for each lodging, whether it's Airbnb or motel or whatever it may be. So that's, this is our request that you, you would approve this and we could go forward with that process.
Good. That's it.
Are there any questions though?
Yeah. Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
I move to adopt ordinance 2025 dash zero one two and ordinance amending chapter 3.38 transient lodging tax of Estacada Municipal Code and direct staff to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Revenue to administer the city's TLT program.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are at the second consideration for ordinance 2025 dash zero zero eight and ordinance amending title 15, development of the Estacada Municipal Code. We've seen it before. You've all had a chance to look it over. Do I have a motion on the floor, please?
I move to approve ordinance, the second consideration for ordinance 2025 dash zero zero eight and ordinance amending title 16, development of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Can I clarify really quickly?
Yep.
I, I neglected to add on to the agenda in case anybody hasn't read the full packet. That is the sign code that you had previously reviewed. So just.
Okay, the second consideration for ordinance 2025 dash zero one one and ordinance amending title amending chapters 13.12 sewers of the Estacada Municipal Code. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I so moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. We are at the next citizen and community group comment. Any online? Any in person? Okay. Moving along, we are at the mayor and council reports comments.
Mr. McAdoo would like to.
Okay, all right.
John or Jim?
You, you didn't fill out a paper for me, John? All right, I won't hold it against you. We'll get you to fill that out after and hand that in. If you'd step up to the mic here, please. State your name and your address. And we'll go from there.
My name's John McAdoo. I'm live up on Morgan Road, been around Estacada since the 60s. I want to thank you, mayor, counselors, city manager, for letting me have a few minutes here to talk. A little bit of suggestions I have on this invocation for the city. I was thinking, should we, we've got 20 churches, I think, within our area. So we, could we set the boundaries for, say, the school district? For those people that want to come in those churches? And then it wouldn't be any, somebody from New York, Portland, Pittsburgh, you know, I'm just saying. So that's something I'd like to suggest.
That's something we can do. Okay, yeah.
Good. And then years ago, when we had it, I believe it was a city, we had about eight, 10, 12 people that would give the invocation over a year's time. And they would call us and then they had a year's schedule set up so that we knew that tonight, somebody'd be saying the invocation, next week, somebody else. So I thought that would work pretty good. And then I would like to recommend, maybe the attorney knows this, but there is at least two organizations, a big organizations in the United States. American Center for Law and Justice and the Pacific Justice Institute has taken a lot of these cases to the Supreme Court. So if you're not sure, they share their information right up. So I've used them in the past for these type of situations and bought true case studies. The fire department's been doing this invocations for years. So that's all I have to say and I thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, John. We appreciate you. All right. You gotta hang in there, John. You gotta hang in there, John. All right, so we had one comment there, it's nice to hear from John. Do you have any comments on that or anything, if you feel comfortable? All right, all right. So moving along, we are at the mayor and council reports and comments. So you wanna start, Jerry?
Sure.
Yeah.
I just appreciate everybody listening to, you know, respecting every opinion. You know, I've, I voted the way that I voted on that based off of, on the invocation, based off of the discussion that we had previously. And it's, you know, I have no problem with the invocation, I just, you know, based on previous discussion and, you know. Previous council decision, I, I, I voted that way, so I appreciate you all. And most thing I appreciate is tonight's meeting was quick and simple. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, Mike?
I'm gonna be talking for about an hour and a half, so, and I'm just talking. Thank everyone for coming out tonight, wanted to let everyone know that the city was supportive through the urban renewal. Funding of a restaurant here in town, the Barbecue Barn, it's gonna be having their grand opening on Wednesday. I do work for the owner, so let that out there. But they're gonna be having a flag raising ceremony with R O T C coming out. And doing a flag raising ceremony Wednesday at nine AM, and then they're gonna have a ribbon cutting at ten AM. And they'd love to have all the community come out and be a part of that, the more people, the better. And excited to be able to see the community have a, a new place to share and enjoy themselves, so. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, thank you staff for the report, and thank you for putting together all the information on the legal side, we appreciate you.
Yeah, pretty much I speak to that, too, except I actually went to the soft open and had the food, it was great. True, well, yeah, true southern charm right there, the, the cornbread loaf's are adorable. I, I just kinda wanna speak to the invocation as well, I, I think we all have a platform here. And that platform consists of many different layers, and that layer comes with sometimes a price. And that price being paid for standing up for those that don't speak for themselves, cuz they don't fear, they fear to do so. Whether what religion or no religion at all, I think it's. Our duty to provide that atmosphere for any and all. And especially the youth being able to feel comfortable with still believing in something. So with that said, I'll pass it on to you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and for those that tune in later and watch this, we appreciate your time. And that you're getting more involved and we love seeing more people in here, and I love seeing somebody in the youth in here, learning. Seeing what's going on in town, that's super, super motivating to me. I wanna wish the world's greatest fighting force, the Marine Corps, a happy two hundred and fiftieth birthday today. And I also wanna say thank you to all of our veterans, tomorrow is Veterans Day. So a big heartfelt thank you to all of you that serve and are serving currently. You are not forgotten, you are respected, you are appreciated. Check on your brothers, it's a hard time of year for some people, it's a party for others. But check on your people, and I just, again, I just wanna really reiterate my, my thank you and my gratitude for those that fight for us. I wanna say thank you to the staff for your quick movement on Broadway. I think that's a demonstration for the community to show that we are listening, that things are, the, the boat is moving. That your, your voice is not going unheard. And that the more that you come in this room and the more that you speak up and the more that you share what you want and what your desires are, the more that we can act on things that are tangible to you. So please continue to come and share with us, give us the feedback. And, and please take this as a gesture of us trying to move the needle forward. So thank you to everybody again, and go Marine Corps.
I am grateful that the meeting was nice and tight tonight. I did sample across the street and it was excellent, the food was excellent. That cornbread is something else. When we got there, the line was actually literally out the door, and I thought, you know, we'll grab some, we'll take home later or something like that. And it was very fast, service was very attentive and we will be going often, the food is excellent. Thank you for the staff, the, the packet was, I think it was a day early, got to go through it. With my little marker and all that stuff and didn't have to bring up any of it, so. But it's, as always, it's a great group. And I do appreciate the participation with the citizens as well as, as everyone here at the table, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Matthew.
Yeah, I wanna thank the community for coming out and whoever's watching online, thank you staff, thank you Legal, thank you council mayor. I see a lot of good things happening now, I see a lot of movement now with, around the school, with this invocation. Happy birthday, Marine Corps. Just, I, I have a lot of optimism, a lot more, and so do a lot of people that I speak to, and I think it's outstanding, so.
Okay, well, that leaves me, you guys take all the air out of the room, thank you very much for that. Like Jerry here said, we, we have the tree lighting coming up, so remember that on the first Friday, so. It's gonna be really exciting, I think they've got a lot planned. It's, it's exciting time of the year, you know, you got your family, you got everybody around.
We're gonna get the audio figured out this year?
Let's hope so, huh?
I, along with the vet thing, Goodfellas tomorrow is having a veterans breakfast.
Yep.
And I did not mention that, so.
We'll see how you, aren't you cooking for that?
I will be there cooking.
All right, well, that just turned them all away.
My son will be serving, so.
Okay, all right. With the tree lighting, that was a, a, a big deal, and of course, the barbecue barn was big. It's a beautiful place, I love to see it, we come into town now, you know, facing out to the highway, it's, it's, it's something new and beautiful. So thank you for that, tell Steve, we appreciate him immensely. Thank staff and thank Legal, it's nice to have Legal in the room, we appreciate everything that you do. So, and keeping us in order and online, so. And then Officer in the back of the room, he's quiet, but we love having you here, thank you. It, it's really nice to feel safe and, and be, you know, together like that, so we appreciate that. That said, I'm going to say good night and adjourn this meeting, but thank you.